Good evening and welcome to the Monthly Board of Education Meeting for Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools. ECPPS is a progressive public school district committed to reimagining education so that all students are given choices to discover and explore their hopes and dreams. And now to begin the meeting, Board of Education Chairperson Angela Cobb.
It is my pleasure to call to order the meeting of the Board of Education for August the 26, 2024. At this time, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. We'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone this evening, and we are going to begin with a roll call. Ms. Parker?
Chair Cobb?
Here.
Pam Perezza?
Here.
Dr. Sheila Williams?
Present.
Tommy O.
Here.
Erica Moore.
Brandon Moore.
Here.
And Ruby Nunez Anaya.
Here.
Rodney Walton.
Here.
Valerie Boggs.
Here.
And Sharon Warden.
Present.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Parker. Mr. Walton, will you read our ethics awareness statement, please?
Yes. Let me get my microphone together. Welcome to the August 26, 2024, meeting of the Elizabeth City Pasquotank Board of Education. It is my duty to remind members of the Board that it is your responsibility to avoid all conflicts of interest and potential conflicts of interest in accordance with Chapter 138A of the North Carolina General Statute. As public servants, it is your duty to continually monitor, evaluate, and manage your personal, financial, and professional affairs in such a way as to ensure the absence of conflicts or potential conflicts. Does any member know of any conflicts of interest or potential conflicts of interest with respect to any of the matters come before the Board today? With that being known, let the record reflect that no conflicts exist.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. To begin this evening, we are going to need a motion to amend the agenda to add the following items: EC contracts, I-ready quote, weapons detection quotes, and student board members. So I need a motion from the floor to amend our agenda this evening.
I'd like to make the motion that we amend the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. Can we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Who'd you get? Okay, Ms. Warden. Do we have any discussion? As in our last meeting, in lieu of a roll call vote, the Board will be voting by a show of hands, so at this time, can we please see a show of hands if you are in favor of amending the agenda? Look at the records show that is unanimous. Now that we have amended the agenda, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Walton and a second by Dr. Williams to approve our agenda. Do we have any discussion? If there is no discussion, may we see a vote of yes by a show of hands? Let the records show that is a unanimous vote to approve tonight's agenda. At this time, turn the floor over to Dr. Parker, who is going to introduce to us some recognitions for this month.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. We would like to kick it off this evening with some recognitions of our FFA program from Northeastern High School, and so I would like to ask Mr. and Mrs. Manzer to come forward and to introduce our young people that are going to be recognized for having recently competed at the North Carolina Envirothon State Competition, and then we'll have an opportunity to take some photographs. So let's welcome Mr. and Mrs. Manzer and the FFA program this evening.
We're very blessed this evening to get an opportunity to recognize some of the hard-working young men and women we have in our program. We, I will tell everybody the story, three years ago, when they were freshmen, Joel and Julie, got third place in the state in the Envirothon, and they both looked at me and said, "We're going to win this before we graduate, Mr. Manzer." And I said, "I bet you are." And then they worked their absolute butts off the last two years. They went out and recruited Imogen and Lucy, and they got Carter Stevenson, who recently graduated, and our alternate Logan Winiger, and they have worked their butts off putting in countless hours, not just with us, but on their own time during our flex times and other things, and we're just very proud of them. They defeated everyone at the state contest and will be taking their amazing talents in Indianapolis in October to compete at the national level against 41 other state-winning teams representing North Carolina. We're very proud of them, and at this time, I'd like to call up our amazing young men and women who not only represent Northeastern High School and our FFA program, but Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools, taking us to the next level, which we're very thankful for every time we get that opportunity. So at this time, I would be joined up front here by Ms. Lucy Roswell. Mr. Joel Overman. Logan Winiger. Julie Simons. And last, but certainly not least, the lovely and talented Ms. Imogen Johnson. And once again, we are truly blessed to get to spend time with these students. We get to get them outside of the standard classroom hours and take them on overnight trips and do these contests, and we are blessed to have these amazingly talented children who put in the time and effort and exemplify what an ECPPS student is about.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Manzer and the team for those recognitions and for your outstanding work at Northeastern for our FFA program, and I would invite anybody to stop by and visit the program at Northeastern to see some of the really incredible things that are going on over there, some of our friends in the animal kingdom that live at Northeastern, and all the wonderful things that go on there. So thank you for your work and all those things. I want to continue here and want to welcome a friend of Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools, someone that many in the room know so well. Dr. Robinson is here with us to present a very generous donation to the school system, and Dr. Robinson, thank you for your commitment to the community and to the school system having formerly served on the Board of Education and your commitment here and joining us again tonight and also giving back. So welcome, and Dr. Waipules is going to introduce the donation.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, and Board Members. My name is Dr. Katina Waipules, Executive Director of Elementary Schools. I have the distinct honor of introducing our Dr. DeNavo Robinson, who will be presenting a financial donation on behalf of the JW Hood Consistory Number 15 Masonic Lodge. In kindergarten and first grade, our students use iPads. When they go to second grade, they begin to use Chromebooks. As you can tell, as you can imagine, the devices are really different. Tonight, Dr. DeNavo in the Masonic Lodge will be presenting a financial donation to our students that are using the Chromebooks for their first year. Dr. DeNavo?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to be back in this environment. I miss you. Thank you. Here with me this evening are three others of our Masonic Brothers. Would you please stand? There's Prince Godfrey, Grand Inspector General Davis, and Prince Reed. Thank you, my brothers. JW Hood Consistory Number 155 is a Scottish-ranked, right Masonic body located in Elizabeth City. It's part of the United Supreme Council Southern Jurisdiction, Prince Hall affiliation. It's also part of the Dr. G. Wesley Allen Council of Deliberations of North Carolina. JW Hood Consistory was chartered in 1941, and its first members included Professor John H. Bias, President of State Normal School, E.A. Anderson, who served as Principal of PW Moore for 35 years, H.L. Trigg, who served as President of Elizabeth City State Teachers' College and a member of the State Board of Education, Reverend C.C. Drew, Pastor of St. James AME Zion Church, Elizabeth City Teachers' College Arts Instructor Lawrence E. Shruggs, and Dr. Donald G. Brandon, the first African-American to earn a PhD in geography from Columbia University, and later married the daughter of John H. Bias. In the past, we have always made donations to particularly our elementary schools. We usually have been giving out book bags, trying to help parents defray some of their costs, but this year, we wanted to do just a little more. So we had the idea of, what can we do to help? Talk to Dr. Jones Waipules, and we were thinking of buying some headphones. But then as we were meeting, we were saying, well, do we know which ones to buy? Are there certain ones that they use? If we gave them a donation, because we know that they're buying them probably in bulk, maybe whatever we would give them would go even further than what we could do in terms of going out to Walmart and buying three or four headphones. So it's our pleasure and our honor as JW Hood Consistory Number 155 to make a donation of $1,000 to elementary school kids for their headphones or other needs that Dr. Jones Waipules would see next.
Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, and Board Members Superintendent. Just wanted to give you a quick highlight of our summer feeding program. In addition to the school sites, which we fed at every school this year, we also fed just girls, Parks and Rec, First United Baptist Church, the Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, NEET, our band camps, football camps, and the Pasquotank County Library. Our total meals this summer was just over 72,000, with our newest site, the library, at 16,540 meals. So we were just, I'm really thankful. We had 15 ladies that provided meals. It's a lot of meals. It's a lot of cooking, and I'm just grateful for them. But we had a great time and just really enjoyed our community partnership. We also wanted to, I also wanted to give a little bit of update on our supper program. So we've had, in the past several years, we've had two supper locations, Elizabeth City Middle School and then Pasquotank County High, they walk over and participate in that supper program. And then we have a supper program at Sheeparney. This year, I've applied and we're waiting on approval for, to open up a new supper program at PW Moore with the 21st grant, 21st Century Grant, and a plan on feeding 120 kids a night, both snacks and after-school, after-school snacks and supper. So we're really excited about that, and that should, with the approval, and I'm sure we will, that should begin October the 1st. The other recognition I just wanted to shout out, because we encourage our ladies to continue their education, and one of our managers at Northeastern High just graduated with her associates in science, Ms. Allison Rollins, and she couldn't be with us tonight, but she just graduated from the Cleveland State College in Cleveland, Tennessee, and so we're so proud of her. And thank you for the opportunity to brag on my ladies and in our program. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
And I want to thank Ms. Reinhardt, and as she mentioned, the incredible employees in our Child Nutrition Department, and I had an opportunity to eat a school lunch today, and it was good. And we had today, among many things, pizza and cheeseburgers, and the pizza was stuffed crust pizza, just like you get at Pizza Hut. And so it was, it was a good meal, so I'm getting a thumbs up from Katie Dukes there that joined me as well. So Ms. Reinhardt, thank you for that, and you heard that number correct, that the Child Nutrition Department prepared this summer, there were 72,000 meals that were distributed to the community at no cost, and there is not a student in our school system that pays for a breakfast or lunch or supper if they're at the participating sites. Every student in the school system eats breakfast, lunch, or supper provided at no cost to them, and it's a quality nutritious meal. And so I just think that's a wonderful thing that we're able to do. So Ms. Reinhardt, thank you so much for your dedication and for the hard work that goes into everything. And I will add one other point, Tammy mentioned it, but we also provided meals to the volunteer work camp that was here in July that did the renovations on homes in Elizabeth City that stayed at Pasquotank County High School, and we were able to provide meals to those volunteers from across the country who visited Elizabeth City and volunteered their time to work on homes right here. So what a wonderful commitment our Child Nutrition Department makes to the community. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes the recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Parker, and congratulations to our NHS students. Thank you so much to Ms. Reinhardt and her team, and also thank you to Dr. Robinson and his team. We really do appreciate your support. It is the time in our meeting for public comment, and just to refresh your memory about public comment, each month, the first part of at least one regularly scheduled board meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. The following directions for participation apply. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comment. A sign-up sheet will be available 30 minutes before the meeting begins for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the board. During public comment period, the board chairperson will recognize speakers in the order in which they signed in. When the person's name is called, please approach the podium without anything in hand except paper or an index card if needed. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with additional information in written form. The chairperson presides over the public comment period. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. The speaker will be made aware when his or her three minutes is up, and at that time, the speaker must leave the podium without comment and either return to his or her seat or leave the meeting. Disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting will be subject to action in accordance with General Statute 143-318.17. And for this evening, we have three individuals who have signed up for public comment. Ms. Parker will let you know as you get to the podium when to begin and when to end. She will be our timekeeper, and our first person speaking this evening is Ms. Teresa
Good evening. My name's Teresa Hempel. My family just recently moved to Pasquotank County, so this is actually our first experience in the public school system. Prior to that, we were part of DoDIA. Today was the first day. My oldest is in first grade, and dropping her off at the school, I actually was surprised at the breakfast options, donuts and Pop-Tarts, no fresh fruit, and fruit punch. I am very well aware that funding between public and private schools is very different, but I feel like with, if this is the norm, that we're setting our children up for failure. We're pumping them full of sugar first thing in the morning and then expecting them to focus in classrooms. Not only that, we're expecting teachers to be able to handle however many students that they have in their classroom. We're setting our children up to be labeled as problematic, as not functioning well, unable to listen, and obviously, outside of the school system, has health concerns. I'm curious as to who provides the food and the meals for the schools, and looking on the calendar, there's no vegetables. The most nutritious thing was milk, and that, they're charged 70 cents for. What are our options? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hempel, for your comments this evening. Next on our sign-up sheet is Mr. Tony Sawyer.
Believe it or not, this is my first meeting this year. Today, y'all started a new beginning, and I'm also asking for the same thing. On March 9, 2021, at 10:51 in the morning, I received a phone call from the district school, district spokesperson Tammy Sawyer. She told me that she was thanking me for the last 17 years that I spent at Northeastern High School volunteering for the varsity football team, but after a recent background check, even though these crimes are older than 28 years of age, I can no longer volunteer with the school system. I immediately began my fight to get back on these sidelines. This fight has continued as of today, three years and five months. During this time, I sometimes have crossed the lines in some of my comments made during school board meetings in my fight to get back on the field. Tonight, tonight, I want to apologize, say I'm sorry to anyone in this room that I may have offended. This is another way who I am or my character. I especially want to address Ms. Sharon Warden tonight, in front of everyone. I called you out personally on several occasions, because as being the school board chair at the time, I know that you could somehow have helped me if you wanted to, but you refused. I still have no right to call you out. I now apologize and say to you that I am sorry for my actions. I know there's not a lot of forgiveness in this building, but tonight, I'm asking that you forgive me for my past actions. I will ask that you, the Lord, vote tonight to reinstate me, or for Dr. Parker to see in his heart to reverse his decision, to reinstate me if the Lord takes no action tonight. No matter what the outcome tonight, if any, this is something that I needed to do to be able to move forward in my life and prepare for what door God is going to open for me next. He has promised that when one door is slammed in your face, it's because he has one big and better waiting for you to walk through. Hopefully, I will find that door and walk through it 10 weeks from tomorrow, when I make my second chance to run up the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer, for your comments this evening. Our final sign-up on the sheet this evening for public comment is Ms. Elizabeth Shaken.
I am so excited for another year here at ECPPS. This year, I have two J.C. Sawyer Dolphins. Daniel is my future engineer, and Severus is my future educator. But more than anything, I hope to see my little boys become good husbands and fathers, men who provide for their families and love their wives and their children. I know the family is the fundamental unit of society, and as responsible citizens and government officials, we should promote measures that maintain and strengthen the family. I know education can maintain and strengthen families. On my mother's side, my grandmother was the youngest of 11 children and the first high school graduate in her family. On my father's side, my grandparents were high school sweethearts right here in the Elizabeth City public school system. They married and raised six children together. Truly, I am here because of public education. Tonight, I'm submitting a proposal to you that I believe will, that will strengthen and unify ECPPS. I propose in two to four years, you rezone River Road students to Northeastern High School, creating a secondary school that will be a competitive option to our local charter school. Families in Elizabeth City can choose global education compared to STEM education. This will expand the community school model to serve more students and families and provide more research on the effectiveness of community-based learning. After this, I propose you rezone PW Moore and J.C. Sawyer students to the River Road facility, Weeksville and Sheeparney Elementary Schools. This will further expand the community school model and serve more students and families at a better facility and become a more effective community hub. This will sustain the dual-language a more effective community hub. This will sustain the dual-language immersion program, which is drastically increasing our elementary school teachers in a district that has a declining student enrollment trend. Furthermore, this proposal will sustain the advanced teaching roles model. As operational expenses decrease, talent and resources are consolidated, and student enrollment increases in better facilities, this model will be more effectively implemented and maintained throughout our district. Included in this portfolio is the Leader in Me framework. I will remain an advocate for this education model because I know it to be a measure that will strengthen the families of ECPPS and unite our schools to a leadership model that will prepare our students for the challenges of our day. In the twenty-first century, the rising generation needs to know how they can be the change. Because when they choose to be the change, they change their homes. And when they change their homes, they change their communities. And when we change our communities, we change the world.
Thank you, Ms. Shaken. That is the end of our public comment this evening. And now we are going to move on to our superintendent's report. Those of you that are probably wondering, well, I need to go home and cook my dinner. If you just hang tight with us until our student board members do their reports this evening, which would be in just a couple minutes, we will take a very, very short recess so that those that need to transition can do so. Dr. Parker, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Want to share a couple of things. First, I want to welcome here this evening. Joining us is Ms. Katie Dukes, who is joining us from Ed NC, which is a statewide education publication that covers a host of education-related topics here in the state of North Carolina and beyond. And Katie and I had an opportunity to spend the day together, and we were able to visit all of our schools today and really just see some of the incredible things going on. And Katie is going to be spending the year with us on a project she's working on covering the, the expansion we're, excuse me, currently under the way with, with the expansion of our pre-K program right here at Pasquotank Elementary. And Katie specializes in early childhood learning, and so she's going to be covering some stories related to that. We also had here joining us today a filmographer from, that works with Ed NC, Mr. Robert Kenlaw. And he started his morning out at P.W. Moore. And through a grant that is associated with our community school grant, Robert is going to be spending the entire year at P.W. Moore, filming and producing a documentary on historic P.W. Moore that will document the tremendous progress that P.W. Moore has made over the past two years academically through the community school grant, but also the history of P.W. Moore and really what it means to our community. And so we're really excited about this partnership with Ed NC and looking forward to telling some stories through the publication about the work going on here at ECPS. So Katie, welcome this evening, and thank you for, for joining us. I also have to share that Katie is a former student that attended Pasquotank Elementary School and graduated from Pasquotank County High School. And so it's been a great honor to have you back with us, Katie. So thanks for, for joining us here. I wanted to share a couple of things, and I think, John, if we could go to the slideshow, we could play that here. So we've done a couple of things. We've had a lot of folks out and about today capturing some really cool stories from the first day of school. And so we've sent professional photographers into our schools. Benny Baldwin, who is here handling our live stream tonight, has been in just about every school and was able to capture some video. And today produced a video that we're going to play for you in just a minute here. And so just had an opportunity to really capture a lot of cool stories today. We, a couple of highlights I'll share. We have completed our parking lot projects at the four schools. And so if anybody drove into Sheeparnie, Northeastern High School, Pasquotank County High School, or Northside Elementary School today, then you saw the completed parking lot project. We have a little bit of landscaping left to do at Pasquotank on the north side, and so that work is, is underway. If you attended J.C. Sawyer, Central Elementary School, Sheeparnie Elementary School, or Northside Elementary School, then you saw a ninety-eight percent complete painted school. And just about every bulletin board and dry erase marker board is back on the walls. And so we're excited about those schools having been completed. We are working to install some murals that are a digitized version of some historic artwork that has been on the wall. So a big change in those schools there in the look and feel. You may have also noticed some landscaping that occurred at every site, and that includes mulch, that includes flower beds, that includes some curb appeal. And as you can see here, many of our young people at our six elementary schools today were able to play on brand-new playgrounds. And when I was enjoying a school lunch with Katie, the first graders I was having an opportunity sitting with had just come in from the playground. And they were very, very excited about the new slides and the new swings. And so a great thing that we've been able to offer to our elementary students here. Also had an opportunity to get into some of our classrooms, to welcome some of our new teachers to the district, and also had an opportunity to visit our Spanish dual-language immersion classrooms. And for anybody that is joining us tonight, we have a handful of, of spaces left in some of those programs. We have some waiting lists at some schools. And then we have some spaces available that we're looking to fill this week. So if anybody's interested in that program, contact your child's principal at Sawyer, Central, or Northside. But on the first day of school today, teachers in those Spanish dual-language classrooms welcome their students by speaking to them fully in Spanish, even if the, the student did not speak Spanish. And so when I had an opportunity to get in some classrooms, I saw a group of our students sitting on a circle, and at about ten-thirty, they were counting to ten in Spanish. And they were playing a game of uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, seis, siete, ocho, nueve, diez. I made it, Chair Cobb, all the way to ten. I learned that today in the Spanish classroom. And so our students are going home today, sharing some Spanish words they learned for the first time in just six hours on their first day of class. Tomorrow, when they come back, the teacher's going to speak completely in Spanish to them, and the young brain of those children pick up that language so quickly. And so we're excited to see that program continue to excel in opportunities. Last thing I'll share here, and then we're going to get ready to play the video that Benny produced today. But we have been working all summer and have been working today on our bus routes and evolving those. So I'll share a couple of successes and highlights with our buses, and then also share some areas that we're continuing to improve on that parents will want to know about. One, we have added bus drivers this year. So this is the first year since two thousand twenty-two that we've been able to add school bus drivers. And we've actually got three drivers that are waiting to finish up a driving test, and we hope that they'll be in place by October. We'll be able to add additional routes. So that's some really good news. We've also decreased significantly the number of students that are on a waiting list to get on a bus route. And so there are students that are still waiting to ride a bus that have not been added to a route as of yet, but that number has decreased significantly from two years ago. And so to any of our families that are waiting to have their child rostered to a bus, the reason why we have a cutoff date, which was August ninth for routes, is we have to, we have to build routes. And so if we continually added students up to the day of school, we could never build the route. It would always evolve, and it's kind of like the wave in the ocean. It would just continue. So we have to build the starting routes. And then, once we get those finalized, we can add students to the route. And there's an extremely complicated computer program that helps us navigate this. And so we have to have a starting point. And that's what we're doing right now, is we're figuring out what are those starting routes. We also know that on the first day of school, a lot of kids that will ride a bus do not ride a bus on the first day because a parent, a family member, or grandparent will take them to school. And so you may have seen some buses today that were not full. They didn't have capacity, and that's true. They had kids rostered to that bus, but all of the kids didn't ride on the first day. Tomorrow, our ridership will increase significantly, and the next days, it will increase significantly. And so by the fifth day mark of school, we'll really have a good sense of who's riding a school bus that's rostered and who's not. The kids that aren't going to ride, we're going to remove them from the roster. And the kids that are on a waitlist, we're going to place them on a bus. And we want to do everything we can to decrease that wait time. But what we can't do is over-roster the bus. And you may have had an experience where you were in an airport lobby or a gate, and the flight attendant came on and said the plane was overbooked, and somebody had to give up their seat. Planes oftentimes overbook seats, thinking, no, not everybody will show up. We don't want to be in that scenario. We don't want to have had the bus fill up and still have kids left on the route we can't pick up. So we have to go through this process of getting the routes finalized. But I just want to say to the public and to our parents that are waiting to get students on a bus, we are working very quickly and daily from here on out, our Transportation Department will be working to get kids added to a school bus. If you're not on a bus now, you're going to get on a bus as soon as we can get you there. I would also ask parents, if you have questions about your, your child's school bus, please call your school. But if at all possible, please let's reserve phone calls to the school and not the bus garage, because we want to protect the bus garage's time so they can work exclusively on routes. And so if you have a question, please field that to your child's school, and that'll really help our bus garage process those routes as fast as we can. So having shared those things, I just want to say how incredibly proud I am of our school leaders, our district leaders, for the tremendous work they have done over the summer and particularly the past two weeks. And I can tell you that there are school leaders and teachers that have worked well into the weekend. They have stayed up late at night. They have been to schoolhouses early on Saturday and Sunday morning. They have put in tremendous amount of hours to make sure our schools have been ready to open as smoothly as they have. And for that level of dedication that our employees make, the only thing I can say is thank you, and that I appreciate the hard work and people we have in the school system to make it what it is. So having said that, we produced a video today. I want to thank Benny for going out this morning and, and filming, and for coming back to the office and, and about an hour editing and producing this video. So this video was made today. I also want to thank John McCord, who's joining us, and Benny and John are conducting our live stream here. So thank y'all for joining us and helping us. And we're going to play this video here, and then that will conclude the comments, Madam Chair.
I am the proud new principal here at Sheeparnie Elementary School. Had a lot of work going on over the summer. A new parking lot. We have had new playground equipment installed. We've got fresh coats of paint all around the building inside. Brand-new mural in the, in the front for you here. So this year, our motto is "Together We Sawyer." And so this year, we're really making a push for our teachers working together with our students, our students working together with our teachers, but also our community involvement, bringing in our parents as well as our local businesses to ensure that we are all working towards the same goal, which is student achievement.
Happy first day of school. Coming with all blessings and happiness.
This is my first day here at Central Elementary School, and I am here with my first-grade students. I hope that my students learn a lot of Spanish, and they are going to enjoy it too.
We're going to be doing Spanish immersion this year. I'm, I'm more than excited to see the results that will be happening upon this twenty-eight kindergarteners. Today is filled with activity. We're going to be getting acquainted with the space, getting to know each other. Everything's happening today, day one.
Good morning, Eagles. Welcome to the first day of school. I hope everybody have a great day.
Hi, my name is Erica Moore. I am Northeastern Student Board Member, and this is my last first day of high school. I'm excited to bring you things Northeastern, that the undergrads have things to look forward to. Also excited to like, you know, leave my mark on the school before I leave and head off to college. My hope for students here at Northeastern, find what you love, figure out the classes you love, teachers that you love that are going to have your back throughout the entire, your entire four years in high school. So I hope they just find their place and know that they can become who they are here, that way they can show that person out in the real world.
My name is Kayden Richardson, and this is my eighth grade year. And this is the first day of school, and I'm looking forward to having a great sports year, basketball and football, and many other sports that other people play. I hope that all the kids at my school have a great year, and I hope they learn a lot of things.
Since I'm in fifth grade and now I'm the senior at the school, it's kind of exciting, but it's challenging because it's very different from fourth grade.
So this year in ECPPS, we initiated the MCL roles with the opportunity culture. So that is, I'm an MCL, so I will not only be working with my homeroom class, but I will also be moving around to the other fourth grade and fifth grade classes and working with the teachers, working with the students, providing small group where I'm needed, and working on plans with the teachers, different strategies.
This year, I'll be able to go into second and third grade classrooms to help support the teachers by co-teaching, modeling lessons, working with small groups. So what I think this will achieve is higher student growth.
Happy first day from Pasquotank Early College.
I am a senior at Pasquotank County High School. This year, I am looking forward to the Friday Night Lights. I'm looking forward to passing, and I'm looking forward to graduation. What it means to me to be a senior, it almost feels like my last year being the child almost. But it's also going up to being bigger and doing bigger things in life.
Happy birthday, everybody.
I'm Camden, and I'm at Northside Elementary School, and I'm in second grade. I heard we have a new playground tonight, and I can't wait to play on it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Vice Chair Pam Pareza and our student board members.
Thank you, Chair Cobb. Happy first day of school, and welcome to your first board meeting, to our student board members. I want to introduce our student board members officially tonight. Pasquotank County High School, Ruby Nunez Anaya; Northeastern High School's Student Board Member, Erica Moore; Early College, Brandon Moore; and our alternate from the Early College, Mason Stewart's here tonight as well. I'm going to let the students introduce themselves and just give a few words and let us know how your first days of school were. Okay, so we'll start with Ruby from Pasquotank County High School.
Good evening. My name's Ruby. Thank you for introducing me. I'm the student board member for Pasquotank County High School. We started the day off bright and early. The senior class of twenty twenty-five got together this morning and watched the sunrise. There was a lot of emotion this morning, being the last first day of high school. We had about thirty students show up this morning. After that, I heard that everybody enjoyed their day. There was a lot of new emotions, a lot of people getting together and getting to know each other. I know there was a lot of working we did during the summer to get us where we are right now. I can speak for ROTC. We implemented the eighth grade class of ECMS, and so now we have first period with them. So they'll come over, and they'll get a feel for high school and what ROTC has to offer for them. We also worked on this new club called Transend over the summer. And so what that basically consists of is that the upperclassmen have got together, and we're going to serve as mentors to the freshman class and serve as their guides and anything that they need throughout their year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. Brandon from Elizabeth City Early College.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Brandon. My principal did send me with a bunch of stuff because this wasn't our first day. But I can highlight from it, the new students are settling in very well. I have seen some at the school. Yeah, we did start tests early, if y'all wanted to know. Yes, they are complaining about the test, but it's okay. We have five students from our school that has joined SGA COA, including myself. One of our students, Eva Taylor, has won horse races for, I think, a couple competitions. And I think that's all, guys. It's been a great school year so far. I'm happy to be a senior. I'm a little sad I had my last first day in my last class. The last class was three hours. It's a blessing to be here.
Great. Thank you, Brandon. Okay, Erica from Northeastern High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erica Moore. I'm a student board member at Northeastern High School. I can say that I am very appreciative for the brand-new parking lot that we have rolling into school, you know, not bumping in my car on the way. you know, not bumping in my car on the way. Today was a lot going on. There's a lot of people in the school, you know, the first day of school, everyone's moving all the time. But I can say I'm very appreciative to our new administration for being very diligent and keeping up with everybody. You see people left and right checking on one another, making sure you're moving forward to classes. Everyone, everything's moving smoothly. There are lots of new rules that are being amended that we were all getting used to. But I think as the days go on, we will get more acclimated to them. And I'm very excited for what the school year is going to bring. I know that with senior year, there's a lot of new emotions and all these feelings about getting older, but also these expectations to do well for our school and present things to the school because of who's coming up next after us. So I'm very excited for this senior year.
Great, thank you, guys. We're really excited to have you with us this school year and we look forward to serving along with you guys, okay? Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys, so much for your reports this evening. This is that time of the agenda where we are going to take a very short, just couple of minute break. So those of you that do need to transition out to take care of your lives this evening, we thank you for coming. We appreciate the fact that you are here with us this evening. And we will take a very short, two-minute recess.
All right, we are now going to return from that brief recess. And we are going to start off with a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to accept the present. I motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Do we have a second?
Half second.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on our consent agenda this evening? If not, can we see a vote of yes by a show of hands? Let the record show that vote is unanimous. And now we are going to move on to our new business this evening. And I am going to turn over that information to Dr. Parker for any updates on the new business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we do have some contracts on here and we have some directors prepared. So Ms. Tilly's going to come forward and can introduce those. And then we also have some of our directors here, Ms. Wilkins, Ms. Tamorelli, Ms. Dr. McPherson, that can speak to any particular pieces of the contract. So Candy, if you would kick us off there.
Sure. In your board packet was a folder actually attached with some EC contracts. The EC department has worked to reduce the contracted services. As you know, we had a lot of contracted services last year using ester funds as well as our EC state funds. But they have reduced to, excuse me, they have worked to reduce those contracts by approximately $150,000. There's still a slight budget gap, but we're hoping to work through a plan. We met with the EC department about this budget gap and plan to work through some service reevaluations, especially in regards to speech therapy. And then we have lapsed salaries that we are using to offset the contracts. And the plan is, if we're able to hire, let's say, a speech language pathologist, then we would drop off one of the contracts. All of the contracts have a 30-day clause, so we would work to do that. So we would start to offset some of those contracts with lapsed salaries. If you have any questions about the specific contracts, the Assistant Director of EC, Ms. Renee Tamorelli, is here and can answer those questions.
I had a quick question. I was trying to, everything is mostly laid out in hourly rate, hours per week, except for Atlantic Progressive Rehab, which looks like that's a more of like a salary amount or for the contract amount for the year. And then there was another one that did not, it was, let's see here, did not have an amount, Aviana Healthcare. And that was for an LPN, Leilani Seymour.
So we, for the, which one is it? The, for the LPN, we currently do not have that contract. I think with the transition between directors, the contact for the agency has been lost in the shuffle. So we do not have an active contract, but that is a one-to-one for a student. And so we're working on getting that contract.
Okay, and then the OT for Atlantic Progressive Rehab? I was just curious because on one of the charts, there's not an amount. It just says, it's empty and it says in person. But then on the list of contracts, it says there's a lump amount with no hourly rate or hours per week. And then it said that it was in addendum A, but I didn't, I couldn't find addendum A scanned in for that contract.
And we just received his contract today. And I'm trying to pull it up so that I can look at it. It's in the, I believe it's in the folder.
Yeah, I'm looking, I just scanned through, I just couldn't find an hourly rate or how many hours they were giving us compared to the other contracts. And just wanted that information if we were going to be asked to approve those tonight. Are you wanting us to approve these contracts tonight? Right, right. I just was curious about the amount. So are we taking Aviana Healthcare out?
For now, until we get it, we'll present once we get that contract.
Okay. And then it looks like Atlantic Progressive Rehab for OT doesn't give hours per week on this chart. And then I was looking through the, and it's, I think it says the amount in addendum A and it's not in here. Well, if it is, I didn't find it.
So it's no more than 37.5 hours for the week. And I do not see the addendum A either with the total salary.
Now, the, in the chart, it says $150,000.
And we use that as an estimate based on last year.
Okay, so that's what that.
The last several years.
That's an estimate on how much we traditionally, so when we sign that contract, it is, there is an hourly rate in there, it just depends. Yeah, if we could just get that at some point, if you want to move on to the others before we vote on that.
Vice Chair Perezza, that was going to be my suggestion because we are going to come back to the EC contracts at the end for some additional information.
Yeah, so if we could move on, if we could get that, if you're wanting us to approve it tonight, if we can just get that information, that would be great.
Okay. The second quote on the agenda tonight for new business is IRADY. This is for one year. It is to purchase a toolkit and the diagnostic components of that. And the total quote is $155,583.31. Chair Cobb, do you want me to just go through each one and then, or do you, are y'all going to vote individually? Or do I need to stop and wait for a vote?
What we're planning on doing is we're going to vote on the new business contracts with the exception of EC.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, that just helps me know what I need to do. Okay? Any questions about IRADY?
What's the status of that right now, as of right now?
Mr. Fudge?
Good evening, Madam Board Chair, Board Members, Dr. Parker. Currently, we have an extension with our IRADY. We're moving forward with the contract for this year. And at this moment, we're currently looking as Candy Shear with just the toolbox kit with our teachers use as far as additional support with our teachers. And also the diagnostic piece of IRADY is what we're looking at at the current time.
Thank you. The second, or excuse me, the third quote, our third new item of business is the dual-language immersion curriculum. The quote before you tonight is for a five-year commitment on this curriculum for a total cost of $81,098.08. We did entertain the notion of just doing a one-year contract, but that same contract for one year was $45,000. Since we have the dual-language immersion teachers for five years, we decided that that was a safe commitment to make for the cost savings we would realize. Next are the two stage curtain quotes. One is for Weeksville and one is for Northside. This is part of a capital outlay project funded by the county. And there are some other schools. Northeastern is one of them and we are waiting on a quote for their curtains. But for right now, we wanted to move forward with Northside and Weeksville. The next two items, they're broken apart because they're two different projects in regards to DPI. These were part of a county capital project that we had for Sheep Harney in regards to rewapping the pipes. When they started the first process, they uncovered these two items that caused that project to go significantly over budget. So when reviewing our repair and renovation lottery funds at the state level, we realized that that would be a good use of those funds. And so the county did approve this at their meeting last week. So now, if tonight this board approves it, we will submit the application to DPI to receive those funds for those two projects. And then that rewapping of the pipes will be complete. Resurfing the high school tennis courts and the elementary school basketball courts. As you all know, we're going to implement elementary basketball intermural with the elementary schools this year. And so we looked at this project. When we do all of that together, the quote is $250,000. That gave us a little bit of a cost savings there. And again, this was one of the items we took to the county commissioners last week that they approved. Next is the J.C. Sawyer renovation of the kindergarten wing. Dr. Parker has set me up very well tonight. He's talked about these projects that the county approved. But unfortunately, the fire caused significant damage. And that wing had an open-air concept. And in talking with school personnel, the teachers, we wanted to make them individual classrooms. The insurance will pay to put things back as they were when the damage occurred. But to do some kind of renovation to make things different, we have to pay for that. So this quote is for making those changes as far as putting in the breezeway and making individual classrooms. And then finally, tonight, the weapons detection. We are proposing to put two at each of the high schools and two at the middle schools. We did write a school safety grant for that, but we did not receive full funding. We didn't receive, we received enough to put in a little over one, like one and a half. And so, again, project we took to the county commissioners and they agreed to fund. And we are using some projects that we have saved money on. But for instance, the rewapping of the Sheep Harney pipes, we will use the money that we didn't use, that we're using state money for, will now be applied to the weapons detection system.
And I'll just share one quick point there, Candy. Thank you for highlighting those. But I just want to emphasize what Candy said and just share our extreme gratitude to the county commissioners for voting on August 19th. You may have read in the daily advance, but the county commissioners voted to approve $2.6 million in capital requests that we made. And that's in addition to the $2 million that the county has already funded us in our budget package for this year. And so our county commissioners are extremely dedicated to funding capital improvements in the school system. And that's just not something you see across the state in every community, that level of commitment to public school infrastructure. And so I just want to thank the commissioners for that. And also say, as I said to the commissioners on the 19th, and some of our board members were there, the county's commitment is to fund us through capital. Our commitment is to start, as we have been doing over the past 12 months, move projects forward, move projects forward, move projects forward. And so we're going to continue to come back and ask for additional funding. We have more parking lots we want to pay. We got more roofs we want to put on buildings. We have more work that we. We have more work that we are in the process of planning out to do, and so that's a really exciting thing. And then on the weapons detection, I just want to make a point that we have, some board members had an opportunity to do this, but on some of our inspiration visits to public schools across the state and the East Coast, we saw in operation some advanced metal detection systems, they call weapons detection technology. In fact, the North Carolina State Fair uses this technology. Last year, they used it as their entry point into the fair. But we saw some schools in Guilford County that have these systems, and so they do not detect metal. So you may be wearing a belt buckle, have metal on your person, and the systems are not going to flag you. But if there's something on your person that has a weapon-shaped object that could be made out of metal, then the system is going to identify that, and there's a monitor that goes with the system, and it will even identify the part of a person's person where there's a suspected weapon-shaped object. And so what this is going to allow us to do at our secondary schools, as you know, where we have metal detectors, is we're going to be able to significantly increase the entry time of our students into the building, because they're going to be able to walk through the weapons detection and not have to relinquish their bag. And unless there's an, unless there is a weapon-shaped object, they're just going to keep walking. Then they go, like they'd walk through the door. There won't be anything to be stopped. If somebody is flagged for a suspicious object, then we'll have school personnel available to pull this student aside. And so that's going to help our entry, and it's also going to give us more credibility and reliability on the safety of our students coming in. This type of technology is a financial commitment, and so, as Candy mentioned, we sought out the full cost of that through the school safety grant. We only received half of what we requested, and so portion of this is going to be funded by grant money. But I also want to take this time also to thank our county commissioners, because they have voted to approve the remainder of this funding. So I appreciate you indulging me there, but I just wanted to make a point about the partnership we have with the public school and the county commissioners here.
May I add, Dr. Parker, in addition to thanking our commissioners, we should also thank our community, because at a moment when we needed additional funding, we requested that the quarter cent sales tax be placed on the ballot for a vote of yes from our community, and we received that vote of yes. So our community, as well as our commissioners, just want to say a big shout of thank you. You know, we have some wonderful community partnerships, and that's just one grand example of what our community has done to step up to help us. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Tilly, thank you-
Yes, thank you.
-so much for all that you have shared with us this evening. So what we need to do at this point is we need to make a motion to approve all of the contracts under new business, with the exception of the EC contracts.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Perezza and a second by Mr. Walton to approve all contracts, with the exception of EC contracts under new business. Do we have any further discussion? If not, can you please show favor by raise of hands? Let the record show that it is a unanimous vote. Now, we are going to go back to the EC contracts at this time, and I will defer to Mr. Lottie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding the EC contracts, I've reviewed those as we've been going through the meeting. There are three of those that have some provisions in them that I would like to see if we can get the vendors to agree to change. And so I'm going to recommend, but as far as the other ones go, I have no concerns about their form. So what I'm going to recommend is that you first take action to approve the following three contracts, subject to final approval by the board attorney. And those contracts would be the AMN Agreement, the Atlantic Progressive Agreement, and the Stepping Stones Agreement. So what I, and I'll be glad to answer questions about it, but at this point, what I'd suggest is a motion to approve those three contracts, subject to final approval by the board attorney.
Ms. Perez, the Atlantic Progressive was the one you had a question about, too?
Yes.
And on Board Member Perez's question, do we have, do we have an answer to that now? And then, Mr. Lottie, was your suggestion that the board move on the motion pending your review, so they could take action tonight?
That's right. That way, you can have the contracts approved by the board, and so once I can then have an opportunity to see if we can get some of those terms, there's only a handful of them for each contract, but we need to see if we can get them to agree to change those. If that can be done, and I issue that approval, then they would be in effect.
So, Ms. Perez, did that, did that answer your question?
Yes, I just wanted the hourly rate.
Okay. All right, so then we need a motion to approve those three contracts contingent upon attorney
Are we approving?
Are we approving the other?
All of them?
We'll do that as a separate motion.
Yeah, we're going to do a separate motion. This is just, so we need a motion to approve just the three mentioned, the AMN, the Stepping Stones, and the Atlantic Progressive, contingent upon attorney approval.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the AMN Healthcare, Atlantic Progressive Rehab, and Stepping Stones contracts contingent upon board attorney approval.
Okay, and we have a second from Ms. Boggs. Any further discussion on just these three? Okay, can we see, show of hands, vote, please, for yes? It is unanimous. Now we need a motion to approve the remaining EC contracts.
To approve the remaining contracts listed.
Okay, and that is without-
And I'll second that.
Okay, so we have Dr. Williams as making the motion. We have Ms. Warden as the second. Any further discussion on those contracts? Okay, can we see a signify, vote of yes by a show of hands? Let the record show that that is unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lottie, for your input and suggestions on that.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, Dr. Williams, will you take us into closed session, please?
Absolutely. I motion for the board to go into closed session, as allowed by NC General Statute 143 through 318, 11A6, for the purpose of considering one or more personnel matters that are confidential under NC General Statute 115C through 320, and as allowed by NC Statute 143 through 318, 11A3, to consult with the board attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege.
We have a motion to go into closed session. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Perezza. Any discussion? Show of hands, vote for yes, please. That is unanimous, let the record show. We are now going into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.